Etabain hello, Bacon hello. Welcome. To the show. Hello mannequins. Gonna have a nice. Calming stream. Cross your legs. Oh yeah. He's such a. Doubting Debbie. Well, don't go to sleep. He's already a little tetchy. I can get him to punch me by the end of stream. He's a nervous Nigel. Alright, why is this taking forever to load? Probably should have had a think about. What's come up in the last few months since the last meeting that I need to. Bring to the attention. Of the council. Probably send your PC to sleep. Alright. Must be good. Oh, I'm getting the extended intro. Uh, hang on, do I need to empty? Yeah, go on, let's have a purpose set. Oh, I should have had it right as I walked into the meeting. Like if I had the intro, um, probably been awake. Pretty good, right? It's hysterical. Cheers. What the? The fuck is this shit? They haven't always been there, right? These things? What's it lighting? Okay, I don't have. Alright. Body zero. Is it fucked, is it? Let's go get some money, get some food. Um, get clocked in here. Um, yep, yep, go away, okay? Hey, Tashka, how you doing? Looks like you're in on drug mode. Woodcock's in a, he's going through something. You alright? Only you're right. Uh. That should do it, surely. That should be enough to get my car fixed. Better than all left, hey? Whoops. Fuck yourself. Nah, I refuse. I got like two, um, eleven dollars off, it's not worth it. Yeah, fuck it, let's just go to city hall. Oh, oh, look at this. How spooky. Hey Grundy, how you doing? Had to pay 2,150 for a boat repair and the auto mechanic down the bay. You mean thrashing it, have you? Uh, okay, I wanna. I was praying that they'd be devil horns on the church. Is there anything on the church? Haven't been up there yet. Yo, they're pulling it out and mounting it on trucks to get the body was at 12%, gotcha. Oh, I still can't park here. Um, we'll park back here. Saying that. Oh. Cool. Grabbing a prime mate in snake hole. Oh shoot, sorry. Oh shoot, yeah, well, thought you heard my footsteps, right? Lot of echo in here.
I was in the zone.
Oh yeah, no, sorry about that.
I don't kid around with my candy bars, Daniel.
Oh shoot, yeah, right, you're Jeffa cake man or a, uh?
Of course.
Muncher man.
Nothing else, munchies are overrated in my book.
Well, that's where you and I differ, my friend.
Oh, I see. Well, that's good, right? We divide and there won't be a shortage for others.
Oh yeah, right? No, gladly take all the munches, she love honeycomb.
Well, I'll leave you to it. I'm just gonna head up to the meeting room. I'll see you in there, okay?
Alright, see you in there. Um, yeah, we'll bike the couple, little trait. I've got plenty of water, I think. Yes, I do. As Woodcock recovered from his brother's rising, well, he was kind of, um, I think he's. Got mixed feelings. He's happy that he got to see his brother again. But, uh. Obviously, you know. Upset it. That, you know, he damned his twin brother to hell. Yeah, no, Woodcock's in a weird spot. Are we the first, huh?
Yeah, squad. To be fair, people are quite often late to these things.
Oh yeah, that don't surprise me. Do we take a, I mean, this is my second meeting. How's it usually go? We take our normal seat or we just, you know, sit wherever we like?
I think it changes sometimes, but usually people go for the same thing, so.
Yes, right.
Have Orion across the way and Reginald next to me where the mayor can keep a close eye on him.
Of course, yes.
In disperse, you know, in between. And then sometimes we have special guests and such. So have you found being a member of the city council?
Oh, you know, it's got its pokes.
Well, yes, but it's not just perks, right? It's also a job.
Yes, no, right, I mean. You know, I'm out there trying to win hearts and souls. Right?
Yes.
And, uh. Well. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it was going pretty well, I think.
Well, do you have like examples that you can provide to the mayor? You know, she's probably going to ask for an update and how things are going.
Of course, right? Oh. Oh shoot, hello.
Oh, don't, don't stop talking.
Yes, hello, ma'am, hello.
Just making sure that Father Woodcock here is prepared for the meeting.
Of course, right?
Uh, no, it's this side usually, I think.
Oh, I'll, uh. I'll sit here.
Can I sit at the top?
No.
Oh shit.
Why, why do you want to sit at the top?
So I can see everything, right? I can see fuck all from over here.
So that's not a bad idea, actually. I'll, uh. Go in there, take a seat at the top, make sure I can take everything for all the notes.
Oh, well, I kinda called at first, right? I had the idea, I should at least get one of the heads.
Sorry, can you shout?
Very good idea, very good idea. Thanks for the suggestion.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, yes, right. I'll be at the head some time.
Brought some coffees with them for this meeting?
No.
Get the mayor a coffee as a little treat?
Oh, what about if I put an apple down on your table, right, as I walk in?
Okay, it's gonna be like that.
Well, I'm saying, you know me, I'm teacher paid, right?
You gotta be careful with the apples there. If Orion walks in, I think, they're usually quite scared of apples, though, you know?
Oh, really?
Very good, Henry. I'm actually, I'm gonna sit up here, because I feel very far away.
Oh shoot, I used to be, you know, come Halloween every year, I was, I was the best at the, uh. A- a- apple bobbin', right?
Apple, apple what?
Apple bobbin'. You ever done apple bobbin'?
No, I'm unfamiliar.
You got a bob for apples?
What do you mean bob?
You know, like, uh. Like Bob up in Diane, right? In Boulder.
Like, like swimming?
Well, kind of, like facial swimming.
Don't understand.
Well, you dip your head in a, in a bucket. Where there's a bunch of apples. How, how, try to fade on to die.
Yeah, right. So are you saying you try to waterboard yourself on purpose?
No, I mean, shoot, depends, uh, how committed you are, right? But shoot, you know what? I woke up this morning and looked outside my window, opened my palm and shoot, there's a big old, uh.
Just checking you're awake.
Oh, she's on the phone, right? Who is it?
It's Reginald. Come on, Reginald, make yourself way to the meeting room, please.
I can hear myself. You know, that sounds super loud.
Carry on talking about apple bobbin', go on.
No, I changed the topic, ma'am.
Hello.
Oh yeah, hi there.
That's fair.
Hi there, Mr. Reginald.
Can everyone just make sure they're shouting in here as well, please? Um, before the meeting starts.
Quite a dense table.
Oh, right, I was thinking, shoot, these walls have ears, right?
Oh, no.
It's actually been quite quiet here over the last, now all the lawyers have moved out.
Oh, of course, right, over to that, uh, they own buildings. Oh yeah, I hear that, right?
Who are we waiting for? We're just waiting on, um. Orion.
Yes, what, what about, um?
Oh yeah, Mr. Tom.
Yes.
It's Mr. Tom.
I don't know if I got, I got a response from Tom. I'm not sure Tom's tending.
Um, I need to talk to that man.
He's probably, probably busy digging through bins somewhere looking for something nice to eat.
To, to eat?
Oh, yes.
Well, he has.
He heads the Bureau of Cold Observations, right? And I mean, after what happened the other day up the park, shoot. I definitely need to talk to that man.
Right, well, it's one minute past now, so should we just kick things off? I think Orion said they might be late anyway, so. We can just come to them last if need be.
Sure.
Shoot one out.
Make sure it's recording.
Thanks. So, um, yeah, I've not really been round for the last few months. I've been working from home, um. Well, I say home.
You say working.
Your absence has been felt, ma'am.
Oh, well, thank you, yeah, so, uh, Henry has filled me in somewhat on things that have been going on in the city. Um, but yeah, it'll be good to get a bit more, more detail, um. Who wants to go first? Let's see, uh, Reginald, do you wanna let us know how things going business-wise?
Yes, things have been going great. Um, we've actually got a brand new establishment opened up in the city, um, Pizza This, for all you pizza connoisseurs.
Lovely, who's, who's taken over that?
I believe it's actually, um.
It's a bit loud.
What was her name again? Na- Nancy?
Ryan Tepecos, right?
Okay, interesting, but I don't think I've met her before.
Yeah, she's okay, a little, a little smelly, but seems to know what she's doing.
Well, I'm gonna have to disagree with you there, Reginald.
Please voice your opinion.
Well. She was telling me they, uh. They authentic Italian up there, right? It's a heritage or this kind of thing. So I says to her, what kind of sauce you use on them pizzas? Oh, she says tomato. So I says, oh shoot, right, I didn't think they had tomatoes in Italy back then, right? When they was, you know, creating their cuisine.
What, what do you mean?
They didn't have tomatoes, right? All this bolognese with tomato sauce, the spaghetti with tomato sauce and the pizzas and all of that, it's bullshit. Ain't it, ain't authentic Italian. Look it up, if you don't blame me.
What would you say is authentic Italian?
Well, pizza without tomato sauce.
So just, um, just cheese.
Well, dough, cheese, garlic, of course, olive oil.
Okay, you don't need to note that down.
Pepperoni, listen to me, and she has salami pizzas, right? It's pepperoni, you're supposed to use pepperoni anyway. This little thing that's been, uh. Eating away at me, right?
If that's your only stress, Woodcock, I think you're doing alright.
Well. I've had a lot eating away at my yoga aside. But you know, I'm like.
You can wait your turn. Uh, Reginald, what were you saying? So you got Nancy who owns the pizza restaurant?
Yes, 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 brand new place that's just opened up, um, seemed to be lively when I popped around.
Alright, anything else?
Nothing else I can think of off the top of my head.
Avenue Bar?
Oh, the Avenue Bar, oh yes, yes, the Avenue Bar has also opened up.
Wait, you forgot that you'd, you'd set up a second business?
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, it's easily forgettable. It's, um. It's not our most glamorous establishment, but it keeps the undesirables out of the glamorous establishment, so. It's ours for this.
Yeah.
Shoot, I drank, so.
Wait, so, sorry, maybe I'm misunderstanding here, but, uh. Are you saying you've, you've opened up a place intentionally for criminals to gather?
Well, not necessarily criminals, you know, undesirables, you know, um.
Harmless.
Yeah, so the, the rough and ready. Smelly types.
Right, uh, people with poor hygiene can go there, you mean?
Yes, 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 exactly.
Shit, hey, it's right.
Right, I mean, as long as it's not causing any. You know, the crime levels to rise in that area. I mean, Lutk, have you got any thoughts on that? Have there been any trouble since this avenue opened?
Uh, well, nothing that's specific to that area of the city.
Okay, that's fine. Well, no, that's good. I mean, we need a variety of businesses.
Excuse me?
We need a variety of businesses. Sorry, do go on, Woodcock.
I was just going, so I've been there several times, wonderful establishment, right? Great staff. Great drinks. Could use a bathroom renovation, but, excuse me?
Who's the owner of the establishment, just for the note?
I believe it's Daisy. Daisy. Shoot, I don't know her last name.
Reginald?
Yes, yes, Daisy, the one with the pink hair, I believe.
Pink haired lighter.
Oh, is that her?
Beautiful lighter.
I'll have it somewhere on the paperwork.
Right.
Okay, I'll put Daisy and pink hair in, in brackets.
Uh, yes, yes.
I believe Hornies was left to Daisy as well. Well, Daisy and Chuckles.
Oh, she good for them.
Business licenses.
I believe Chuckles is that now the, right, of, of, um, Hornies.
Right, okay.
The former owner passed away, ma'am.
Yeah, Henry did mention it's just really bloody inconvenient, creates more paperwork, but anyway, um.
Well, a lot of people have been dying lately. I think it's part of something bigger.
I would say a lot, but you know.
No, a ton, right? Tons of people are just dying, left and right.
Please, can we just keep this meeting on track?
Oh yes, everybody's dying in your city, right? Let's, let's forget about all that. Sorry, I brought it up.
Everyone will get a chance to speak.
I'll just remind you, Woodcock, you're here sat at this, this table with us because you were voted in by the people sat around this table.
Sorry.
Henry?
Uh, we're looking like we have a latecomer.
Oh, yes, hello.
Oh, don't worry, you've not missed much. Uh, we're just, we just started with Reginald, just getting an update on the businesses, so. Apparently there's Pizza This open owned by Nancy Pickles and The Avenue, which is owned by someone called Daisy with the pink hair. And then apparently Norrie has died, um. So Hornies has been left in the will. Oh, I know, I know. We haven't got into the details around what's happened there just yet, but, um. It's been left to someone called Chuckles, which I imagine isn't their, their, uh. Formal name, you know?
Yes, I do plan on having a chat with them to see if they still plan on, um, we'll fill in Norrie's vision, you know, they talked about, um. What was it? The awful prizes with your meal and the, the random, um, yeah, the random prizes and things like that. That was rather interesting, but, uh.
Dead animals in the frozen.
Really came to fruition.
Well, as long as they, uh, plan to continue his legacy of paying his business license, then it should be fine, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
So with the, um. With the business license fee, so where are you up to?
My bloody knees, is it?
Okay, so whose have you collected?
Well, I did have a chat with Nancy, um, but we've, we've given her some leeway. As a new business owner, while they sometimes get on her feet. As for Hornies. You know, it's a bit of a, giving them time to, to process the loss of the.
I don't think anyone pays him.
Boss.
Yep.
So, so sort of taking a step back from there.
Teapot, Bahama Mama's, uh, but is it called Tammy's now? I saw there was another mechanics on the services called Hayes Pearls. About those ones.
Yeah, so some of them are on my to-do list. I have made numerous visits to the little teapot, but, um. They don't, you know, seem to be rascadisque at the moment.
Uh, what's the, the other one? There's like a organics shop, right?
Oh, yes, there's always organic, talk about that.
Oh, yes, yes, I still do, I still do pay a visit to Zoe.
Okay, Reginald, can we have a chat after this meeting, if that's all right?
I've actually, um, I've actually got bad meeting, is he?
Right, well, we'll, we'll book some time in, okay.
Did you mention the second mechanics?
No, he didn't actually. I just noticed it in the, in the phone app.
No, he did, right? Somebody did.
His, his, yes, brand new mechanics opening town.
Oh, you mean the highway robbers?
Always.
The what?
The highway robbers?
Did they rob it? I don't believe there's any criminal aspect.
Well, no, no, that, no, but I mean, the prices are criminal.
Oh, I see. They're, they're competitive rate then?
Well, that's why we have competition, you know, if, if their prices are exaggerated, then everyone will go to Benny's. Um, but as long as, you know, they're pushing some of those profits towards their business license fee.
Oh, of course, right?
Right, so who's the owner of this establishment, so I can put it on the notes?
The shit.
Oh, the names elude me. I could draw you a picture of their face, but, uh, names, names elude me.
Oh, it's on the tip of my tongue.
Okay, can I just, this is a message for everyone in the room, this isn't talking to anyone, but can we just make sure we're prepared for these meetings, please?
Ah, I am.
Exactly, so he puts a lot of effort into organizing these meetings, please come prepared.
Okay, um, anything else, Reginald?
Um.
Great, uh, Orion? How are things going in Pillbox?
Uh, seems, uh, things seem to be going quite well. Uh, we've hired a few new members of staff.
Sorry, sorry, Orion, you're, you're coming, coming across quite quiet. You, uh, you're chatting?
Sorry about that, there, there we go, fix that now.
Oh, perfect, perfect, thanks.
Just had to clear my throat. And we've hired a few new members of staff on as, uh, paramedics. Uh, hoping to get them, you know, nice and trained up. Drake has stepped into sort of a number two position so that he can. You know, recruit more hospital staff. Um, I've had to spend a few. A few days, weeks, and a fair bit of time away back in Scotland, visiting my wee mall, so. Uh, I've been around quite so much.
Oh, lovely.
But he, he seems to be doing, he seems to be doing great work, you know, very, very proud of him. And, yeah, things seem to be going, seems to be going pretty good.
And somebody who uses the hospital facilities, you know, shoot quite a lot. The, the people up there, they do great work.
Oh, fantastic.
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints. Seems to be going well.
Yeah, and I've not had any dubious text messages with complaints, uh, randomly, so I, I always take that as a good sign, so.
Oh, definitely. And, uh, have you had a thought about what money you need this month?
Not all of them.
Yeah, I think it'll be, uh, just a small amount, just, uh, for running costs, so. Just around a, a, a five thousand mark, which I think is the same as, as last time.
That is music to my ears. Yeah, no problem, I'll get that sorted, okay.
Ah, thanks very much.
Is there anything else you wanted to raise up, like?
Uh, nothing I can think of at the moment. I mean, there is a, a, a question I would have possibly for Luchuk. Uh, but I don't know if that would, um. Need to be required for the, for the meeting.
Okay, well, yeah, so you can have a, talk about it now or pick up after.
Um, it was just, uh, wondering whether, um, an autopsy had had to be done, uh, on. Norrie and whether that had been facilitated for yourselves.
Uh, I believe you sent one, but there was also. Gary, Gary Pillock.
Okay, I haven't heard, um, I haven't heard anything about Gary Pillock, so I will, I can look into that for you if you haven't got the, the information you need.
Uh, yeah, the detectives would know, uh, what?
I end the third person.
What third person?
The other man who died.
Who else died?
My bro- my twin brother Nathaniel.
Oh, no, well, he, he, I don't need that. I don't need the autopsy.
Oh, you don't need the headache, right? Oh, another day of all.
By a shark, I'm not going to ask the shark. Actually.
I've seen the reports.
Oh, bit of a straight off.
Yeah, yeah.
The others were related to cases, so that's why the PD needs the, uh.
Oh, yes, right, okay. No, I listen, right, I, I mean, I don't mean to. Excuse me?
We're sorry for your loss, Daniel. I think the city councils as a whole are all grieving with you.
Well, I'm too, right? Yes, no, thank you, thank you. It's a lot, right? Well. Yes, the, uh, well, uh, you know, I didn't either.
I mean, it does raise the question, who did we know this is the real Daniel Woodcock and not Swinbro or faking?
We go to system. We go to system, Luchuk could figure it out in less than a minute.
Can, can take his fingerprints if you want to, make sure. I did see them both together at the same time.
System, right?
Oh, the question.
Yes, we'd have to do it in private, but I mean, you could figure it out, you know, it would take two seconds.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, um, Daniel, we just wanna check to make sure, you know, do you feel fit to be at the meeting today, you're grief-stricken, you know, how you?
I never.
Running the church?
I ain't never been fitter in all my life.
Okay.
I actually have something to bring up regarding that.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
So. You know, obviously we're all aware that, uh. Every member of the, of the council here has to. Watch, you know, how they act and what they say, cause they represent this whole group, right?
Of course, yeah.
Yes.
So. Why do a lot of people believe that you went and shot a shark? Woodcock?
My?
Yes.
That I went and shot a shark?
Mm-hmm.
Which one? Which shark?
Which shark? That's a good question. Uh, it's a shark that you thought, uh. So I was told is that it was on the day after, uh, Nathaniel was attacked by a shark. Went back to the hospital, so you went on a boat with another person. Went out to the ocean to get revenge on the shark, and then you shot a shark.
Oh, for killing my brother and attacking me two times and nearly killing me two times? Well, let me say this, right? No, I'm saying, is that the shark people? Uh, we need to know which shark, right? I didn't kill any sharks, but let me say this, right? People are wondering. Oh, the people are thinking, oh, the poor shark, the poor shark. They didn't give a fuck when they killed Nathaniel. When it bit me in half two times. They didn't give a shit about that. It just, you know, shoot, I, 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 full I know this shark is still alive, right?
Which one? Why are people thinking this in the first place?
Because I've been, cause I got a grudge over that shark. Yes, I do. Yes, I do, but I would never wish any harm upon it.
To, to be more specific, uh, the person that was driving the boat.
I see. I know, he, I was there when he confessed. At the Nathaniel's funeral, can you believe that? Yes, he's, uh, confessed in, uh, quotations, right? He got up and he's like, I need to confess. Like, what are you talking about?
But why would, why would he confess this until it didn't happen? Seems a bit odd.
I got my theories.
He actually, he actually came up to, to us in the PD. Trying to turn himself in, because the gun was, the gun that Woodcock used was his.
Oh, right, right.
So like, it seems very strange that he would.
So the man who's got, okay. Right. How many guns do I own? How many guns do I own? Y'all wanna know? Zero, right?
Yeah, you took his gun to, well, he's saying that he took, you took his gun.
Yes, and the man who's got a grudge against me. Who's been coming at me. Is trying to set me up. Oh, it was his gun I used, huh?
Why is he doing that?
Well, I got my theories, right?
Was, was the shark armed at the thing?
Excuse me?
Was the shark armed or was it defenseless?
I don't fucking know. I never killed no shark.
Okay, is this, is this a, a criminal investigation currently? Or is this just an internal for us?
Are you joking, mate? This is an actual criminal investigation. Throw it out, Luchuk, it ain't, no, no, you're barking up the wrong tree.
Regardless of where it goes, my point is right now, is that people saw that at the church. And you have been seen making a lot of comments about wanting to kill sharks before.
They were jokes, and I already got my head beat in for that, and robbed the two grand.
All these jokes about what you wanna do to sharks, and then they hear from somebody that you did go and shoot a shark, especially. With a situation like this where it seems like.
No, fair enough, you gotta take.
Revenge on the shark, right?
Fair enough, right? You gotta take it seriously. Yes, I understand. Um, I'll cooperate.
Regardless of the intention of what you say, whether it's a joke or not, it's how it looks and how it reflects on us as a city council, okay?
Yes, we go to, as though we. We go to appeal, as though people, people gotta look at us and be like, you know what? I wanna go grab a beer with that person. Right? I'm trying to be, I'm out there.
Daniel, no, they need to look at us, Daniel, and think. Yeah, I have faith in those people to run this city and, and keep it a safe place.
And I got my methods, ma'am. I know what I'm doing, right? I'm your man on the street.
Right.
I'm the man of the people here.
Raise with you, Woodcock, is why is there a picture of your bottom half stood next to a love honey parcel on Birdie?
Love honey, oh, dear, what the fuck is that on Birdie for? It's on Birdie? Why'd it put it on Birdie?
Is that one of those, um, those flashlight? I've heard the fantastic things.
Flashlights? No, I mean. I just use the torch on my phone, right?
Oh, no, no, you must hear me, a flashlight.
Flashlight? What the hell is this? The doctor, some of the doctor uses? No, the, I mean, this man during Nathaniel's funeral the other day, this man came in with, uh, he bought me a, uh. What do you call it? A fucking, uh. Hunger, uh, shoot, what, uh, uh. What, HelloFresh, right? A fucking HelloFresh delivery. I never ordered. It was from Mr. Nancy. It's a gift. Apparently.
That doesn't look like a HelloFresh box.
No, but then he came back in with this thing. He said it was honey and there was buzz, buzz in it or something, right? It was buzzing real bad.
Daniel, whatever, whatever you need. There's no judgments here. I'm just saying again, it's a little great that that's.
How do you know that's me in the photo?
You can tell by the shoes and the pants that you're wearing, and it's in the church clearly.
It's, it could be Nathaniel.
I think Nathaniel was dead at that point.
Yeah, I thought, I thought he had sadly passed on.
How do we know when this photo was taken? Li- look, it's me, right? It is me, but I don't know what's in the box. I got a bag in my apartment.
Well, can, can we just roll back here? Reginald, what is it? What did you call it? A flashlight? Like, is it like a skin colored flashlight?
It can be skin colored, yes, yes. It's in the shape of a.
Skin color? I mean, what skin, what color? All right, let's.
Well, it could be, it could be any color, you, you can, you can order them depending on color and, uh.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
What, what are the point? What's the point of it?
Well, rather than producing light, you tend to, um, stick your dick in it.
Can you stick?
This is getting quite inappropriate. Can we get back to the, the schedule, please?
Reginald, uh, Henry, can you just add that to the list of things we need to pick up with Reginald after?
So you think there might be one of them in them box, in their box, right?
No, we don't need to, let's just close that conversation down, please.
And so what it, uh, oh, yes, right. And then what? But hang on, then what? You put your dick in it, then what? No, right, I, I don't need to know, ew, right?
Remain back to order, okay?
Of course, right? Ain't my bag.
So I think we had a small update from Luchuk, but, uh, did you have anything else you want to bring up?
Wait, are we, right, yeah, we'll move, we'll move on to Luchuk, sorry, turn around the room a bit.
Okay, listen, I just wanna, I just wanna say, listen, Luchuk, you're absolutely right. I will, uh. You know, do, do whatever I can to restore faith in, uh, my public image, right?
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Yes, of course, and I'm ashamed that, I mean, that I'm being targeted and it's, it's, you know, making, uh. Me as a city councillor and look like, uh, I ain't being. Uh, conducted myself with the proper, uh. The call room, right?
Yeah, that's, that's all right.
Okay, uh, Luchuk, what's going on with the police? Any updates on anything in particular?
Um, well, we've, we've hired two new people.
Great. What are they, um, recruits?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, they're still in training right now, uh. They've been doing all right so far. Uh, we've had, uh.
Sorry, could have stopped you there, w- with the recruits. How are you doing for like senior command? Have you, have we got enough presence in like the. The more senior positions at the moment? How's that going?
Uh, we have a new sergeant now.
So how many sergeants have we got altogether?
One.
Right.
Cause JB. JB was demoted. Um, after an investigation, uh, he was replaced by Plunker.
Okay, how's Plunker doing?
He's doing great, actually.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but if you talk about like other senior roles, the detectives are as well, cause, uh, they're detective sergeants. So I have two detectives and one sergeant.
Okay, good. And then, sorry, what were you gonna move on to then?
Um, there is obviously the matter of, uh. Norrie.
Yes, but do we have any idea what's happened there?
Uh, we have an ongoing investigation, uh. So what happened to Norrie was during, uh, a traffic collision during a police chase.
Right, um.
And at the moment, we have, like I said, we have an ongoing investig- investigation looking into. Uh, what happened exactly.
Word on the street.
Do we need someone outside of the PD looking into that, given PD were involved? I mean, Henry, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm unsure. I suppose it depends on how suspicious the circumstances is the investigation into, uh, the. The right doing or wrongdoing of the police, or is it just, uh, the, the, well, the missed traffic steps anyway?
It's into the, uh, the officer that was involved in the chase.
So an, an internal review rather than, uh. Of, of the, the police force as a whole, right?
Yeah, no, it's for like, uh, at the specific person.
Okay.
Just to make sure, you know, like, you know, someone died in the chase, we have to make sure that, uh, everything was followed correctly, you know?
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Of course, of course.
I mean, have we, have we had much noise from that, from the public?
People are saying the police killed him.
Oh.
Okay, that's not good.
Why are people saying that?
I don't know. That's what I heard.
It's, it is your, your role to, to know, is it not, Daniel? Is that not, your ears to the ground? Is that not your position?
Said you're the man on the streets.
Yes, and that's what I'm telling you. People, somebody told me that, uh, they heard the police killed him. Implying some kind of, uh, you know, ill intent.
I'll post a, a tweet on Birdie after this, just, you know, give my condolences to Nori's family and friends.
That's a good idea.
Yes, Gary and Nathaniel, yes.
And Ga- Gary, uh, what happened with Gary? Sorry.
Um, right, so, yeah, the Gary thing is a bit more, uh, complicated. So Gary was in a, was in a chase, he, uh, a foot chase, but he, we believe he fell off a bridge. Like one of the highways.
So this is another person that's died during a police chase?
Well, not exactly. So he fell off, we took him to the hospital, he was, uh, looked at by a doctor and discharged very quickly, uh, if I may say. Um, be confirmed with the, actually not a doctor, it's a paramedic, it's, uh, Drew.
Yeah, it was, uh, Drew Peacock.
Hell of a paramedic.
Discharged him quite quickly, even though he fell off a highway. Uh, but you know, I'm not a doctor, so I trusted, uh.
So there's potential negligence, medical negligence.
No, no.
We, we took him back to the, can I, can I finish speaking?
Well, dude, I'm just saying Drew is very good paramedic. Sorry, go ahead. Yes, no, sorry, right.
Let Luchak finish, please.
Of course.
So we took him back to the cells, uh, he was waiting for his charges, he was lying on the bed. He then just rolled off the bed onto the floor and was unconscious. We took him to, back to the hospital and he died. Now Drew is saying he hit his head when he fell off the, the bed, but just before that, he had fell off an actual bridge. And, uh.
Okay.
And then a medical professional had cleared him as, as being okay.
A paramedic, not a doctor.
Oh, well, they can go to hell.
Look over the medical records and then just try and maybe give us your kind of medical opinion. I'm not, I'm not saying to do that right now, but you know, do a bit of digging and.
Yes, yes, of, uh, of course. I've just had a little look at Drew's report there and he says that, um, most likely a, a brain bleed or an aneurysm, which could present in him acting totally fine after a major fall and then one slight knock could be the thing that does it. And but I'll have a wee, a wee dig into it and see if I can find any more reports.
Should be like, uh, when you bring somebody on, shouldn't he have been, had like a scan done or?
I think so, um, yeah, he should have gone.
It seemed like he was treated in the lobby.
Yeah, he definitely should have had a C T scan just to check swelling of the brain.
Uh, can I just add today? Can I just add today? I, I had spoken with Gary, uh, a couple of weeks ago, right? And he had some kind of, uh, something, uh, some, I think some paramedic or something had, uh, knocked his eye out or something like that.
Oh, Christ.
Yeah, and well, no, it wasn't Christ, he ain't got nothing to do with it.
You know, that, that is, that is absolutely fair. Yeah, I'll have a wee investigation into, into Gary's past medical history and see if I can figure out what happened with his eye and then what initially, uh.
Yes, but who knows? The man wasn't, yes, right.
Has Gary had an autopsy? Is that what that report is based on?
Uh, so that's not an autopsy report, that is just a, an incident report for his actual death. So, uh, yeah, I will, I'll make sure the autopsy report is done.
Perfect, that'd be great, just so we can give, you know, the public closure, because they're probably gonna want answers. Although I don't know who Gary Pillock is, I don't think I ever came across him.
I, I think at one point he was, uh, either a cleaner or a, a maintenance man in Bahamas.
Yes.
Um, because he's, he was in before because a, a severed toe was found and he, it fell in his mouth and then he had to come and see me, um.
Oh, shit.
A while ago.
Was that when he passive aggressively, uh, saved me that time? Saved my life?
Maybe, maybe, but yeah, it was, it was quite a while ago, so it could be around the same time.
Might have been my toe, shit.
Right, so, uh, that's an internal investigation to come from the EMS, yes?
Was it my toe?
Okay, perfect, I'll write it down.
Anything else, Luchak?
Uh, there is a matter, yeah, uh, we're working on catching him at the moment, uh. We're currently coming up with a plan to, well, I don't wanna say too many details, but.
Sorry, Luchak, can you fill the mayor in on the situation from the start, please? All I've heard is from, uh, what the public have told me, so might be interesting to hear it from your perspective.
So about a week ago, someone was spotted, uh, with a hammer on a motorbike, driving around and hitting cars. They would go to any place that's, uh, like any business that's open, probably finding out through Birdie or other social media. They would go to wherever people are and start hitting their cars with the hammer. They never stop, they just like drive by slowly, hit the car with the hammer and drive off. Uh, but as of, uh, a few days ago, they actually attacked, uh, people directly.
Right, that's not good.
Yeah, so at the moment, we're currently coming up with a plan to, uh, oh, we're making a trap for him, uh, basically.
Okay, so, so how long has this been going on for?
Uh, about a week and a half.
A week and a half? And you haven't managed to catch the person?
Oh, he's always on the motorbike.
Do, do the police, did I not give you a lot of money in the last meeting to pay for motorbikes?
Do, we do have motorbikes, um. There isn't that many of us, so we usually have like one or two people on a motorbike and we do have a lot of things that we can do to stop a car during the chase, but not necessarily with a motorbike, not without severely harming the person that's on it and.
I mean, is that an issue here if he's walking around hitting people with a hammer?
Yes, kill his ass.
What is wrong with you?
You, you, you didn't, you know, you didn't break in time, you know? Don't put that on record, please, Henry.
Yes, let's, uh.
Are you asking me what's wrong with mine?
Let's keep this proper.
He's killing, he's trying to kill people with his hammer. Kill his ass. Protect us.
That's not what my job is.
Okay, well, listen, I, I've already spoken to Henry and we are gonna be putting out a post, I'm gonna be doing a lot of posts tonight. Um, giving a ten thousand pound reward for anyone who can provide information that results in the capture of this person.
Oh, shit.
Did we say, did we say that much?
Uh, ten feels right to me. I mean, we start at five maybe, see if that gets, gets the interest.
Well, I got information.
No, Daniel.
Shit.
So, how should we, what's the formal name of this hammer person? How should I refer to them?
Uh, he keeps posting on Birdie under the name of.
Hammer Tom, so.
Okay, Hammer Time.
Like the hit nine is on.
T Y M E.
Okay.
Oh, so not the herb or the.
Oh, he's just.
Yeah.
How, how old is that post?
Oh, I did see, see that come up about fifteen minutes ago, something like that.
Oh, shit, okay.
Hammer Time?
So we'll do that and hopefully the plan that you.
I think you're whispering right now.
You're a little quiet.
So we'll do that then, we'll, we'll double end it, so you do the, the, the trap and our post about getting information, okay?
Okay, well, it could help, but sometimes these kind of things just make people call in with just made up information, just trying to get the money.
Yes, maybe we should, uh, specify that if it leads to the capture, they'll be rewarded.
Yeah, that would be better.
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I've, uh, I've made a note of, so, okay, is there anything else, Luchak?
No, no, that's, uh, that's about it.
Okay, and what are you looking for budget wise this month?
Hmm.
Uh, nothing this month, actually, um. We did, yeah, uh, we did get, uh, actually, we did spend some money to get, uh, news, like speed readers and plate readers on the cars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which should actually, might help us get an identity on the, uh, bike person.
Okay.
Oh, and you got all that money.
Huh?
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
What money?
Oh, the, the, the mayor generously donated at Tammy's funeral.
Oh, is that, is that how you paid for the radars?
Uh, no, that paid for the police boat and the bikes.
Oh, shit, right.
Yeah, uh, we do get a little bit of money from, uh, you know, fines and stuff, and that's what went towards the, uh, the radar.
Wait, you, you keep the fine money?
No, we don't keep it. Where, where do you think we pay, like, the salaries of, uh, full officers that work there?
For the budget, the ridiculously large budgets that you ask for.
Every time I've asked, I've asked for a specific amount of money, it's gone towards a specific thing. Like when we did like the hiring bonus thing, remember? Uh, when we bought the bikes, when we bought the boat, when we bought the new cars. But otherwise, all the money that we get through other means like fines, that goes to pay salaries and pays for other things that the P Ds are supposed to for.
Okay, I'll take your point, um, just to let you know that, um, Reginald, I haven't had the chance to speak to you about this yet, but I will be asking Reginald to come and do an audit at some point, just around, you know?
Yeah, of course.
Income expenditure, all that sort of stuff, you know, where all the money's going. It's just, it's just standard procedure.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, okay, um. Daniel?
Yes, mine.
Anything to update, Tom? What do they call you again? Like the community engagement? Lead or something? I can't remember now.
Oh, yes, uh, community mayor stuff. Something like that, right? Okay, we, we're, okay.
You, you can stay seated if you like.
All right, I might, I might, I might, uh, start seated, right?
Okay, quite, quite, quite dramatic. Do you have a?
There's a lot to get, lot to get through, right?
Okay, okay, well, I don't, don't, don't stop you. Go ahead.
All right, now. I have been approached by the, uh, the city watch ladies, right? The, uh, not Tom, uh, the fuck they call themselves? The city watchmen, right? The, the, the neighborhood watch, right? Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And, uh, they have, uh, requested.
Is this a, is this a city organization? I'm not aware of a neighborhood watch.
No, I think it's a, a group of, um, you know, women in their twilight years who, who are servicing the community by, eh, having binoculars.
Oh, curtain twitches.
Gets them out the house, right?
Oh, I see. Do, do they work in conjunction with the police? Have they, have they helped at all?
No, in fact, they have been arrested a couple of times before.
Oh, really?
I had no idea.
I thought y'all was on good times with them, right? I thought more I captured crack a case.
Some other people maybe, but they, they have been committing crimes.
Oh, shit, right.
We are definitely not working with them.
Like crimes of vigilanteism, where they're taking it a bit too far, or actual crimes?
Uh, well, I, I, I can't go into details, but nothing violent, I can say that.
Felony crimes or misdemeanors?
Both.
Oh, okay.
Oh, shit.
But nothing, nothing violent so far.
Okay, nothing. I'll put that in notes, nothing bothering, but continue.
Like breaking bad. Uh, well, well, shoot, I mean, they, they had requested to get a, for one of them as a representative to be uh, uh, sworn, uh, to join the city council, right? To be representing the, the, their vigilante or whatever the hell, what even do they do, right? They, they wanted me to ask y'all if one of them could come and be one of us, right?
Uh, probably not, no, but what we could do is for the next, the next meeting, maybe we could have a slot for them to do a little presentation or something of what they do.
They were supposed to come in with me today, but I can't find them.
Right.
Unreliable also, good.
Well, maybe just leave it, leave it and see, they've probably forgotten, I know we haven't, they, they're, they're of that age.
Well, yes, you're right. Okay. All right, and, uh, now, Mr. Mayor, you been down to Legion Park lately?
Uh, yeah, I was there to help put all the decorations up.
Oh, all the pumpkin heads and, uh, ibels, all that kind of thing?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you happen to notice the body of water there, right?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That was a trick question, man. There ain't no water there, it's blood.
It's, it's not blood, Daniel.
It's blood.
It's dye.
It, it died, won't?
It's red dye in the water, Daniel. I had to jump through hoops to get the, to get, uh, the environment agency to approve it. Had to think of the fish apparently.
Wait, the fish are now?
Who died?
Well, yeah.
It's, what? Down there in Legion Park.
Blood.
Cause there's, okay, well, that ain't the only thing that makes me, okay. It's, no, it's, I'm quite sure it's blood, man, anyways. There's a, uh, like some kind of.
Daniel, uh, Luchak, consult, can you get one of your officers to go and get a sample of the said blood, please? And then we can get Orion to test it.
Find out if it's human blood or animal blood.
But it shouldn't be blood at all, right? That's a, that's a public location.
Yeah, or it's potentially.
Water with red dye.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the test if it makes you feel better.
All right, my, okay. Also, there's some kind of, uh, satanic torch that's, uh, appeared.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
Have you, did you see it when he was down there?
You mean the house that we put up is for a bit of fun?
Yeah, is it not? Just like a, like a haunted attraction?
Just an attraction.
No, no, you must be thinking of a different thing. There's a, there's a torch there. You walk in, there's a pentagram on the ground, drawn in blood.
It's paint.
I.
Decoration.
No, it ain't, no, it ain't right. There's a wajibald in there. There's a wajibald that communicates from the other side.
Daniel, I know you have your faith and you probably don't agree with Halloween, but the majority of our citizens here like a bit of fun every now and then, okay?
Oh, I love fun more than the next, next man, right? I got about ten witnesses who was there when the wajibald talked to us, right?
Daniel, come on now.
Listen to me, this is very important and very serious. It said, I have risen.
Oh, for goodness sake.
Listen to me. And then I saw my brother come through them doors.
Right, okay, Daniel, I think you need to take a few days off.
Uh, 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 listen to me, this is serious, mayor, something wrong is going on, okay?
My main concern here, right, is you're gonna be spouting this shite to the public.
They was there, the public was there. They're, they, you gotta believe me, right?
The rest of the story, let, let's just listen to them. Your brother walked in and then walked.
He walked in, he looked terrible, right? Because he. Yes, and the refrigeration system up there at the mall had, had cut off or something and he had decayed quite a bit. Right? My brother's a zombie. My, my twin brother is a zombie. I'd never thought I would say them words altogether like that. My twin brother is a zombie. He came.
Can we do some sort of evaluation, please, after this?
No, Plonker was there. Plonker saw it, right? You asked Plonker. You asked Plonker. There were ten people, there were like ten people, right? Paddy, Diza, Zoe, Drake?
Uh, o- okay, um, not to, like, not to put a dampener on your story, right? Um, but are you sure that if, you know, the likes of, like, Daisy and that were there, are you sure they weren't playing a joke on you?
Wha- okay, so you think instead of a zomboman coming back from the dead, rising from beneath the ground, coming in and telling me all about how it's my fault that he's in hell, that he's burning in hell, and then raining off?
It's your fault.
You think that is less likely than a bunch of people getting together and making a preacher believe his brother has been zom- his recently deceased twin brother has been zombified, somehow reanimated his corpse? Just as a little prank?
Uh, okay, uh, Daniel, you know, we, we all respect your beliefs here and such, of course, and you have your rights.
Well, I hope so.
Up in, in, in your church and, and, and to believe the things you wish to believe.
I do a lot more than that.
We, we, we know that, uh, you, you're going through a time of grief, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and it is all.
Oh, yes, right, yes.
You may have been taken advantage of.
Oh, yes.
Can we return to?
Zoe, Drake.
Facts of the things you have, uh, you've heard.
Okay, let's, okay. Well, hang on, hang on.
One second, Luchuk, can you, um, speak to Sergeant Plonker about this, please? Just get a statement to close the loop on it. And yes, Orion, if we can just arrange some sort of evaluation, uh, to go ahead with Daniel, I is having this convenience.
Listen, you.
I do have my own concerns here, um.
Okay.
Were you at the Avenue Ball, perhaps? I remember the time these events occurred, Ryan after these events.
Was that, who might?
Is that it could be potentially a spiked drink or potentially.
Okay, listen, no, right, yes, right. Okay, let's say it was a spark drink, okay? Then none of the people who were there will be able to re- recall the same story I just recalled, right?
Well, are those people also patrons of the Avenue Ball?
No, no. I don't, I don't buy it, right? Now.
But are, are they though? Are they? That, that's the question. Are?
So you think I.
Referenced also patrons of the Avenue Ball.
Oh, we all, we all had a shared, uh, shared psychosis? Some kind of shared delusion, shared hallucination?
Been your drink that spiked, it could be that the drink being served there is spiked. Had that already. It could be dodgy drink is what I'm thinking, and if you are all patrons and all suffered the same episodes, it could be something we need to come down on.
No, no, no.
Were the people that you mentioned there patrons of the Avenue Ball?
I know Zoe don't drink. I know Zoe don't drink. Pretty sure I ain't never seen Drake in that ball. Never seen Patty, right? Never seen Nathaniel down there? Oh, that's what brought him out of the grave, huh? He, he got his drink sparked.
Uh, he, he's been in the grave. He's already been buried and such.
No, okay, you, you've, okay, let's go dig up the body. I bet you it ain't there. I bet you there's an empty grave.
Right, let's just move, let's just move on from this now, please.
He said something about the.
Go, yes, I'm about, well.
So you're saying he's buried?
Yes, well, he, apparently he was.
You're saying he walks out of the hospital, out of the morgue or something?
Oh, no, 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 okay. I had a body viewing, right, a few weeks after he died, and Drake wheeled him out. He had him in a room for me, right, out of the freezer, and he said, "Look, something's happening with the freezing system over there, whatnot." And so he's a little decomposed, and he, oh, shoot, he stunk, and he looked terrible, right?
Uh, Ryan, can you verify if there's a problem with the freezer at the hospital?
Eh, not that I have heard, but I will, um, confer with Drake and find out what, what's going on there.
That does sound very traumatic, Father. I'm sorry you had to go through that.
Uh, yeah, I am, I'm very sorry, very sorry about that, but no, I've not had any.
Well, it's one of them things, right? Okay. Well, that's strange.
Uh, sorry to make you like, you know, remember that, uh, but can you tell us how exactly Nathaniel died? Like, what did the shark do?
Bit his ass straight off.
Okay, so if he was a zombie, how would he be able to walk?
Well, he still had his, uh, it was his, like, his ass cheeks, right? You can walk without your ass cheeks, you just can't sit down.
He said the whole thing was gone, just bit off?
Bit his, bit his ass straight off. Well, I mean, you know, I, that's what I was told, I mean, I didn't, I didn't see, you know, a back and then just legs. I didn't see his ass was bent off, but that's what, that's apparently caused the death. Ass bit off. I was there, I seen the shark bite him now. I seen that.
I'm just concerned we get into a bit too much detail about this, and you're clearly still very grief-stricken, Daniel, so let's just move on to the next point.
Well, cause the funeral was, you know, sabotaged anyway.
By a criminal element or?
By what?
A criminal, who sabotaged this?
Decayed who, uh, you know, says he, he thinks I shot the, I was the one who shot the shot, I don't know. And the delivery man kept cutting, it was. No, it was just the mayor's, right? He was terrible. And then straight after.
These, uh, mystical events, have you heard anything else on the streets? Let's, let's move on, maybe.
Well, I ain't done with the mystical events.
Yes, uh.
There's still more, and I wouldn't call it mystical, I'd call it satanic. Now, Mr. Nancy, right?
This is the person who owns the pizza place?
Pizza lady, right? And I think she works, uh, PR or something up there at the PD, right? Something like that. She's Ivo, she's entrepreneur, right? She's got her fingers in me- sorry?
Uh, HR for the PD.
Oh, HR, sorry, yes.
Yeah, and the hospital.
Yes, right.
Sounds like a very busy woman.
Busy lady, very lovely lady, right?
Busy lady, yeah.
And, uh, but she ain't been so lovely lately. Matter of fact, she ain't been lovely since that, since, uh, Luchuk's scavenger hunt, right? Now, I think this is how all of this started. Cause I mean, we was all, I mean, people weren't themselves during their scavenger hunt. And Mr. Nancy especially, right? Oh, shoot, I, if I.
Under the influence, or?
No, just nasty. And also, if I told you, shit. Ah. She, something strange was going on with that lady, uh, in her mind and in her body, specifically her belly, right?
Okay, well, you, you know, this, this meeting isn't to talk about someone's, uh, health and wellbeing, you know, that's something that they'll have to bring up with their physician.
I'm trying to paint a picture here, right? There's a lot of weird things going on, I'm telling you. Okay? And I could go on and on, but I, I, listen, right, I, I.
Oh, we know, we don't know what's on.
I try to cut it a bit short, right? What I'm getting at is the Bureau of, uh, uh, Coal Tubes, why should we go and need some money, right? Cause we got a lot of investigating deep, a lot of fixing up to do.
In what sense?
We go to investigate what the hell is going on with all this satanic shit.
How is what you've just said got to do with, with Satan?
Well, Satan zombifies people, right? Satan, uh, puts demons inside old ladies, right? Makes their belly button, uh.
What?
Huh?
Well, what? It's, it's all satanic, duh. Oh, yes, it's just coincidence that all this satanic shit has happened, right?
It is, it's Halloween, you know that, right?
Exactly.
Orion? I was just gonna say, I don't understand the, the, the belly button part.
Oh, shoot, well, that's the most disturbing part.
Yes, of course, of course, this is where we can be drawn the line.
Well, you didn't see it, right? You didn't smell it. Oh. She, she had this, this strange, uh, substance, right? I don't even, I don't think it was natural. I don't think it was out of this world. It was coming out of her belly button, right? And she would say to me, well, not her, but the demon inside of her would say to me, "Drink my belly button juice." Stuff like that, right? And this is a lovely old little lady who's, who's a, you know, a charge goer.
Did you drink her belly button juice?
Hell, no, right? Oh, yes, and that's when I saw Natha- yes, her belly button juice, her, her belly button juice was sparked and I drank it.
Did he just turn British?
Excuse me?
Did he just turn British?
No. I'm all American.
The whole, the button?
Belly button, button.
Yeah, that, that is quite, uh, uh, yeah, a British way of saying button.
Well, I've been around all you British people for so long, right?
Are you making fun of me, Daniel?
I'm, I'm.
No. Well, Britain and, uh, you know, the, uh, other, you know, I don't know, what do I, uh, with? There's British people here. There are British people here. Excuse me?
I was just having a bit of fun, Daniel, okay? Uh, Orion, given what Daniel is saying, he so clearly seems to believe it. Regardless of whether it's demonic or not, I think maybe, given this Nancy seems of a certain age, you could invite them in for like a health screening or something and just box all out.
Yeah. Oh, she's done all that.
Be a good idea.
Listen, no, no, she's done all that, right? She had a, she had something like, something wrong with her U T R and, and, uh.
Uh, okay, Daniel, let's not be sharing this for a woman's health information.
Well, she's gone round, it's talk of the town. Nancy's U T R, fucking talk of the town.
Uh, that seems, seems like that kind of gossip and stuff you would not want to share.
I ain't even sure what it is, right?
Seems cruel to me.
Right, anything else, Daniel, that's related to the city council?
Well, yes, right, um.
Okay, let's, uh, keep it, you know, uh, official, yes?
Oh. Well. Well, I guess, uh, you know, I mean, the church could use, uh, I lost my hand, man, right? And I mean, the church is in disarray. I'm getting spray painted constantly. I had to do my twin brother's funeral up there in a spray painted church. I need funds.
Look into the, the graffiti issue you're having.
Oh, I mean, it's been happening for months now, right? Uh, they're, they're professionals, they, they, they get in and they out, I don't know, you, you know, ain't nothing that can be done about that. I'm quite sure, otherwise Luchuk would have done something by now, right?
Yeah, whoever it is, they just, they go and target, run out immediately.
Can't get him. Yes.
Do we have, still have community service ongoing for removing graffiti and such?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we do.
Yeah, that happens from time to time, which is obviously very, I'm very grateful for, of course, but I need more, I need money. Thanks, Asl.
Maybe do a fundraiser, money for the church, you know your position.
Well, I'm, I'm doing a fundraiser, I'm, I'm, I got a fundraiser to plan coming up.
Are you recruiting another handyman?
Excuse me?
Handy person? Are you recruiting another handy person?
Well, yes, but I mean, we need, you know, I need to rebuild my sign up there. There's, that there's hammer man destroyed. There's a lot of things I need to, uh, upgrade. Uh, fix up, have fixed.
And I will definitely support you by retweeting any fundraising events that you arrange.
Of course.
All right, yes, yes, I'm doing the, uh, shoot, what did I say I was doing? Hang on. It was the, uh, the Nathaniel Woodcock Shark Conservation and Awareness Fund. You know, like I said, I wanna, I wanna fix this. If there's any issue with my public image, I'mma fix it, right?
But is that fund not going towards shark awareness rather than?
Exactly, that's, yes, that's my point. I can't, what am I gonna? Shark awareness, shark conservation and awareness fund plus, uh, church funds? How many more funds, how many more charities should I throw in a while, right? Is what I'm saying.
Your prerogative, right, if you're running these fundraisers?
Well, I can only do one at a time, that's why I'm saying if the council could give me some money for the re- repayers and whatnot.
You can always ask, um, and see if there's anybody who would like to do some volunteer work and do the, like, maybe they do the repairs.
Yeah. Well, ask businesses, any businesses that they'll support the church by having a role.
Get the community all involved.
Oh, yes, right.
Like a community spirit type thing, maybe, yeah, go into the businesses and see if they'll, you know, do a wee donation for the repairs and stuff.
Right.
Idea, wonderful.
Yes, but, oh, to, well, to organize that, I may need city funds.
You get your paycheck?
Yeah, but I mean, you give the hospital, you know, budget, you give the police, but, but police ain't spending any money this month. Why not swing me that fifty grand? Sorry?
They aren't requesting any money this month, and, and the hospital, are, are you saying that your community engagement and fundraisers are uh, cost, costly as running a whole?
Oh, so, okay, so y'all were saying, fuck you and your church, y'all don't need any money. Is that what?
Telling me that I should take money off Orion to run the, the, for the basic costs of the hospital? And give some of that to you, is that right?
No, I, of course not. I ain't a monster. I'm saying fifty grand, you're gonna, you're gonna give Luchuk, give to the church. We could really use it.
I must agree that I do, um, I agree with the fellow here, um, you know?
Yes.
Want him to perform at his best, and want to get the best return on that investment, it needs funding.
Thank you.
Okay, Reginald, do you find that money?
Well, if, if, to be fair, if we get some business licenses, we might find a bit more money.
Yeah, that'd be great if you actually did so.
Oh, shoot, right. Let's see what, oh, I'm just asking, you know, just see what you can do, right? Help, uh, help a preacher out.
I will, oh, yes, I'm, I will definitely consider it, okay, so if you've got anything else, Daniel?
Well. Probably, I mean, a lot's been going on.
Yeah, that's fine. It seems like you've covered the salient points.
Yes.
My feedback to you, Daniel, is can you make sure you're posting more community type posts? Get people engaged and be aware of who's around you when you're drinking? Cause it sounds like you've been doing a bit of that at the Avenue.
Well, I'm in mourning. Yes.
Yeah, maybe stay away from the alcohol for now.
Well, it helps, right? It helps, and I get to be around people and, uh, I'm tell, I'm telling you right now, it ain't, no, no, I ain't been sparked shit like that, no, 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 no.
Right, well, we'll just, we'll agree to disagree on that point, okay?
Oh, yes.
We'll uncover the truth.
No, I don't agree. I don't agree to disagreeing, sorry.
Okay, well, I'm pulling rank and we're gonna agree to disagree. Uh, Henry, anything from you?
No, nothing much, just, uh, an, an old sort of pull a check if, if possible, uh, this, uh, hammer wielding person. Should they be caught? I, I would like to hope that it be tried with attempted murder for all of these hits, yes? And it can be brought to court?
Yes.
Wonderful, yes, that, that's the only, uh, caution I had for sure.
Perfect, okay, well, there's nothing else from me, so that's everything. Thank you again for attending. Uh, I appreciate we haven't had a meeting for a while, so hopefully that's brought everyone up to speed.
Yeah, I feel very informed.
Yes, thank you, man.
Yeah, maybe we'll give, uh, Daniel a time limit next time.
A time limit?
Just, you know, maybe, may, no, do you know what? Maybe we'll just do like an actual agenda, just so everyone's got like a slot and they stick to the time.
Next time I'll bring my witnesses.
There's, there's a lot going on at the moment. It's, uh, that's spooky season and, uh, obviously you're a bit, uh, you're grieving also, so I think, uh, I think it's okay to, to, you know, I, I allow the father a bit extra time this time, right?
Oh, there's.
Be better next time.
Well, there is one more thing.
Oh?
I ain't got access to the staff car park.
Oh, yes, uh, no, they've removed that, I think. I think they're redoing the lines.
Oh. Okay.
Is this for the, for the city hall?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I'll have a look at it. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get you a spot, um, but yeah. I'll do the best.
Well, I mean.
Quite limited, I'm sure, but they're, they're repainting the lines, I think, so I'm getting a bigger slot, so that should be fine.
Oh. Well, I mean, you know, I gotta, you know, it's just a lot further to walk if I can't get, it, you know, into the.
Everybody.
Oh, yes, alright, okay, thank you everybody. Sorry I bulged you the tears.
Uh, but you know, please, mind.
Orion, I wanna speak to you.
Yeah, of course.
Actually, uh, you wanna come into my office, Reginald?
Mate, I'd love a, I'd love a chat if you, if you got time later on today.
Yeah, I'll give you a call, Daniel, okay?
Give me a call, right?
Meeting notes over as soon as I have them all correlated.
Perfect, uh, Henry, do you wanna come in for this meeting, just very briefly, literally be five minutes, thank you.
Don't worry, Henry, I'm sure it's nothing, nothing serious.
Dude, who ruin now? Alright, that wasn't too bad. Hmm. How's my car gonna be there? How do you know if you have rabies? Asking for a hot friend. What was that, what was that other notification? I replied to it, was it? Alright, let's go grab a drink. Um.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system. Zero, seven, nine, three, three, nine, eight, nine, zero, zero, is not available at the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up.
Hey Coke, it's Woodcock, I need to talk to you real bad, okay, this emergency, alright? Uh, uh, something horrible's happened and, uh, I can't believe it and I really need to, uh, talk to you about it, right? So, uh, please call me back, I, 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 please. Alright, bye bye. How do you put the speed limiter on? What's he playing at here? He going up to the church? I'm paranoid. Oh, what's that light? Sign's still smashed out. I think it is. Wonder if I should put that, put the sign back up saying that it's smashed. Anything in here? Oh, just exterior. Okay, there's no sign on this either. Well, I didn't fix them, maybe they got fixed when, uh, the, um, Halloween, decorations were put up. Oh god, tracksuit mafia. This is Daniel Woodcock.
Hey, are you still at City Hall?
No, no, I'm up at the church.
Uh, okay, I'm with Orion at City Hall, we're gonna head over to the park to do a test on, uh, blood slash water.
I'm on my way.
We'd like you to be there so you can be present for the test.
Alright, I'm on my way.
We'll meet you, we'll meet you inside the park, okay?
Alright, I'll see you soon.
Bye.
Bye bye. This feels like a trap. Oops.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system. Zero, seven, seven, four, three, four, four, seven, five, nine, is not available at the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up.
Peter, this is Daniel Woodcock, Colin. Can you tell me why it says tracksuit mafia all across the side of my church? Call me back. Bye bye. Hey, does Woodcock know he's in T S M? I know Peter is, um, I'm, I can't remember if I know the rest, but I know Peter has told me. Whoop shit. Didn't say, oh, caps, oh, nah, yeah, that's all good, I don't care. Yeah. I think I know Randall's in it, but I, I, just in case I don't, I was gonna call Randall, but I, you know, I know for sure Peter's in it. And, um, I'm quite sure it was Randall who spray painted it. Okay. He- hello?
Hello, I'm, uh, free now with you off.
Oh, yes, alright, well, I'm just, uh, I'm just, can you see me, hang on?
No, we got your camera the wrong way around, Daniel.
Oh, how's that?
Yeah, I can see you now.
Alright, I'm just on my way, uh, oh, oh shoot, well, don't be like that, please, okay? Okay, Le Chuck and Orion's up here at the park, uh, doing the, uh, the testing of the blood, right? So I've come on up as well.
Yeah, do you need to still speak to me or are you okay now?
Oh, I'd like to, yeah, yeah. Let me just, uh, how, how long, how long you gonna be around?
Probably be around too much longer today, but if you let me know when you're around next, I'll try and, uh, I'll try and make sure I'm around.
Alright, very good. Alright, okay, let me, let me show you this water, right, can you see it in the background there?
I, I, I've already seen it, I've literally already seen it.
It, it ain't die, right?
It's definitely die.
Alright. Well, I don't know what to tell you, right? Oh, it's a beautiful day out here in the park, though, must I? Last time I was here, when, when Nathaniel, uh, my twin brother was, uh, oh, shoot, hang on.
Daniel, I thought about having some counselling or something.
Well, may, maybe, right? I mean, shoot, I've, I've, you know, when I first started seeing Nathaniel, Drake thought I was crazy, right? And so he was, uh, it, it, you know, took me in for a session then.
Maybe, maybe have a few more.
Yes, right, well.
What are you doing?
I think maybe.
What, what did you wanna talk about, Daniel?
Well, uh, well, I'm here at the, uh, I'll say, I say hello everybody, I got, uh, Maya Suzie on video call.
Uh, who, hello Suzie?
Can you hear him? Hang on, hang on.
I can't hear them.
Yeah, say hello, I got you on speaker.
Hello?
Uh, hello?
Hello.
Hello, I, I didn't realise we were gonna be sampling the water so quickly, but that's good, that's good.
I've got to go to the way, you know?
Yeah, very good, right?
I like to get on with that then, and Daniel, I'll catch, is it urgent what you need to catch me for, or?
Well, a little bit, right, I'll, I'll, yeah, uh, let me call you back in like a minute, right?
Okay, right, just, just do that and I can make a call back.
Cause I like to catch up, yes, alright, okay, bye bye now. Alright, sorry about that, yeah, uh, you know, Maya calls, you gotta answer, right?
Uh, yeah, hey, hey, uh.
Alright.
Right, yes, what I'll do is I'll take a little vial of this.
Alright, yes.
We'll, we'll go to the little lab in the hospital and we'll run a pH test on it and that will, uh, let you know that, it's, uh, whether it's water or blood.
Oh shoot, yeah, it's okay.
Trying not to get all, trying not to get my shoes that wet.
Oh, yes, I make a horrible mess. I mean, looks pretty blooded to me.
Well, it's very runny. Uh, and that's, that's not, you know, concrete proof, uh, if it's been watered down, it's been watered down, it would, it would, change the texture, but, um, the pH test will last though.
Yes, of course, right.
Yeah, so if it's anything above two, uh, then it's, you know, too acidic for it to be just, you know, just pond water. Um, but it could go up to two because of the dye.
Of course, right.
You see, so, we'll, we'll, we'll know.
Alright, yeah, it's okay. Alright, well, thank you, thank you for.
Oh, is it already?
Yeah, well, I've grabbed the, I've grabbed the vial, um, the, all the sticks for the test are in the, the, the hospital lab, so I don't know whether you guys want to come or whether you, you want me to just, you know?
Uh, I do have to go, but like, if you can take Woodcock with you, just to see the, uh, the results himself.
Yeah, it's no problem if you, if you've got the, a couple, a couple of minutes.
Oh, that quick, huh?
Yeah, so what it is, it's a, it's a really simple, almost like a sticker paper test, what it is, is, uh, it's a special type of, it's like cured, cured paper, and what it is, is it'll change colour and it'll, uh, show you the,
Oh, yes.
Property, yeah.
Oh, right, okay, I remember them from Sans Claius.
Yeah, so it's, it's the quickest way to do it, I mean, the, the way they use it in school, so.
Yeah, it's alright. Okay, well, I'm anxious to find out, right?
When you stick it in some lemon juice and then you, you, you realise, oh, that is very acidic, you know?
Oh, yes, right. And then, uh, what's the opposite, bass, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then it's all, all the way up like.
Yes, right.
Have you, have you got your own car here or would you, would you like to left?
I do have my own car, it's, but it's on the opposite side, I should have parked up here.
That's all right, well, I can just meet you outside the hospital.
Yes, right. And, uh, oh shoot, Plonker. Okay, you saw my brother the other day, right, remember?
Yeah, I've never seen your brother.
Nathaniel, my twin brother, looked exactly like me, except he was a zombie, remember that?
No.
Over there, in, over there, so?
Uh, you remember someone dressed up like you, like some weird, the, some weird, I don't know.
Okay, I, okay, I rest my case.
What?
He seen him, right?
He, he saw a person.
Yeah, cause he didn't know that it was my brother, he doesn't know it's my brother, but he saw, somebody who resembled me and he looked in bad shape, right? Zombied. Looks like a zombie, right?
Remembled you and was in bad shape, or you seen you'd in bad shape?
What? No, he resembled me but a lot worse than me.
Uh, I think, I think he was pulling off the face paint, to be honest.
It was, no, okay, it was, his skin was rotting off his face, right?
No.
I heard, when you, listen to me, Plonker, I heard you. When you came out, you got on your radio and you said, what is the code for resurrection, right? I heard you.
Hey, as a be joke.
Oh, what a, what a fantastic thing to make jokes at, it seems like, seems like Nathaniel's death is, you know, the big basis for every joke these days. People playing pranks on me.
Saying he's a zombie.
Excuse me? And then he vanished, right? Here, follow me, follow me, just over here, right? Is the dug up grave sign still there? Yeah. Need I say anything? Need I say anything?
Why, why did you bury?
Yeah, this is your, your brother in a, a public park. I didn't, I didn't try, Drake organised it.
Why did Drake organ, organise, why is Drake organising the burial of people? He's, he's a doctor, not a, whatever buries people.
He's a funeral director, ain't he?
Uh, I, I, I thought he was a doctor, uh. That seems like a conflict entry.
This is a public park, you can't just, but, you can't bury people, huh?
Hey, a fox, a fox will have that dug up, that's, that's what happened, your brother's been eaten by foxes.
Oh, in the middle of the city, no, ain't no wild animals here.
Do you think foxes live? Fox, yeah, foxes live in the middle of the city, it's, uh, you should see, you should see back in Glasgow, they just run loose all over the place. This.
Like the dogs, right? No, no, he's, no, he has risen, right, he's walking around as a zombie, you keep an eye out, right, you'll see me, he walk, excuse me?
Where is he then?
I don't know, he vanished, he ran through the doors, if anyone saw where he went, it would have been Plonker.
What, like a ghost?
No, no, he, he wasn't transparent.
He kinda stumbled across in these bushes and then jumped over that fence and then ran. And Drake was like, don't, don't follow him, don't follow him, and I, to be honest, I didn't care enough.
Well, he was worried about us, right, cause the weather was doing strange things as well, like the, the, the scar turned red with blood. Well, he was worried about us, right? Cause the weather was doing strange things as well. Like the, the scar turned red with blood. You gotta believe me. It did, right, Plonk?
It was orange.
Well, it was, yes, it was strange though, right?
It was like a, a sandstorm. We live quite near a desert.
Yes, well, right as we realised the grave was dug up, right, and then we went in there and the Ouija board, nobody even touched it. It moved on its own and it said, "I have risen."
Eh, no, I think it said ER.
ER?
Like the TV show?
Yeah, the TV show?
I would say, no, I thought it was asking for the ER, eh, you know what, I was actually, a different time, that was a scavenger hunt. I was like, "Cause it's a bit late for the ER, cause the guy had a sword through his chest."
Oh, oh. What?
But then it turned out, no, he didn't have a sword through his chest.
Oh, right.
If you, if you see a zombie, there's no...
Eh, yeah, I hope you find the pieces of your brother that's been ate and digested by foxes.
Oh come on, don't say that. That would, I mean, I wish that was the case, right? No, like I said, I'm connecting the dots, right? There's a lot going on. A lot of strange things going on. So connected.
Okay, that, that's good. You, you, you build us a report, we'll get right back to you.
Why do I feel like I'm not being taken seriously right now?
Cause you told us your brother's a zombie.
Yes, ask the other witnesses, right?
We're gonna need the evidence, okay?
I, I, you, you, I'm one of the witnesses.
Yeah, but she wasn't there for the first bit of it, where he came in and he was yelling at me about that it's my fault that he's in bathing in the unholy vase of hell, or whatever he said, right?
Eh, I don't know.
Zoe was there? Drake, Patty?
I mean, from what I've heard, your daddy may be in hell.
What?
Eh, me, you should probably be in hell.
Oh. Okay, I'm in, I'm in need to put in a complaint about that. You can't say that to me.
Eh, debatable.
LeChuck? I would like to make a formal complaint.
Uh, okay, alrighty though.
You want me to write it down too?
Eh, no, I have to write it, you can't write it, it's about you.
I'll write your juice in case.
Okay, uh, ah, Daniel Woodcock. Hereby-
How are you spelling Daniel?
Exactly how it sounds, right?
But how you eh, spelling?
No. Exactly how it sounds.
Or a U?
O's, can't spell Woodcock without o's?
Like W U?
No, no, that'd be Woodcock.
No, I think you can, you can say it that way.
No.
Or W O U L D.
It's just the regular way of spelling it, right? Ah, Daniel Woodcock, hereby, do formally complain about Plonk.
How are you spelling Plonk?
Exactly how it sounds, right?
Right, spell it out then.
P-L?
Mm-hmm, great.
Well, you tell me how you spell it and I'll tell you if, if, if that, if that's right.
It's on the bash, you know, read it.
P? No, I can't read it, right? Well, P-L-O-N-C-K-A-R.
Okay.
Plonk.
That's some, that's somehow amazingly wrong, but eh... Hey, we might need to get your vision checked if we're, if we're going off reports, so.
Yeah, I may need to, okay. I may need to upgrade my prescription, right?
Read it then.
Why is, why is the complaint is about?
Well, he said he wishes I was in hell or something, right? How am I supposed to have faith as a city councilman?
Nah, I didn't see that.
I don't believe I heard that word.
As city councilman, how am I supposed to have faith that I am being protected as a targeted individual, right? Cause I am on city council. How am I supposed to have faith that the police gonna protect me, huh? When they saying things like, he said I should, maybe you should be, no, what did you say? You should be in hell? Or some shit like that. I hope your brother's in hell and shoot, I hope you in hell, I hope you go to hell as well.
I don't know, mate, your brother, but from all accounts, it seems like everyone liked him, so eh, no, probably not.
He was a lovely man.
And, and this life.
Well, I know you are, LeChuck, but, excuse me?
No, I'm talking about the, we as the PD.
Oh right, well he ain't.
In this life, if there is a hell or whatever, then we can't please you or anything about that.
When have you not felt protecting from me?
I ain't going to hell, what the fuck you mean? I'm, I'm a preacher. I got a seat next to the big man his safe when I get up there.
The old preachers get a seat.
Well, since, you... Not all, no, cause some, some preachers, some preachers are pieces of shit, fucking uh... You know, just pretending, right? Using their position, you know? As a means to uh, get what they want.
So how many, how many good preachers do you think are?
I don't know, I'd assume most preachers are pretty good, right?
Okay, so that's gotta be like a lot of seats, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the seat that's right like, right up close, or like, all the way at the edge?
I might be a few down. But I mean, I'd be there at the uh... You know, I'd be uh, at the, if Gold's daughter got married, I'd be right there at the front table, you know, where all the grooms and everything go? I'd be right up there at the, at the front table. And probably giving a speech and wotting old, right?
Okay, okay. It's a very strange complaint, but I've written all that down.
No, this ain't part of the complaint, it's just, just say, just say that, hereby, eh, complain.
Wait, I thought you were complaining about your position in the chairs?
Eh, you lost me, you lost me when you started talking about God.
Oh, that don't surprise me. Eh, okay, if, if this man will apologise, I will hereby uh... Redact my complaint. I didn't hear, I didn't, did he say anything? I didn't hear him, right? The wind caught my ear.
I think he said, "Sorry", and ran.
Alright, I hereby remove my complaint, right? Withdraw my complaint. Listen, I mean, think, you know, shit's been crazy, right? I don't want... I like Plonk, right? I don't want that man telling me I should be in hell. Hurts my feelings.
Um, I'm not sure what that was about, actually, I'll, I'll talk to him about it.
Alright, thank you, sir.
But again, if you if you do see a zombie or anything like that, just, just let us know.
Well, well, you ain't gonna hurt him, right?
A zombie?
Yeah, yes.
Well, Ryan?
Yeah, hello?
If you saw a zombie, what would you do?
Eh... Well, I'd first have to ascertain whether they were a zombie or whether they were somebody in makeup, because the, the reactions would be different.
Of course, but let's say like you've confirmed, like, oh my god, this is an actual zombie.
Probably a bit of a sire, right?
Say you have a gun, what would you do?
Eh... Again, I, I would probably run away, and then I'd probably phone you, so that you could confirm that I was indeed not cuckoo bananas.
Okay.
Cause I, I don't, I don't really wanna shoot anybody if they're not actually the undead.
No, don't shoot him, listen, zombie-
If I found a zombie, what would you expect me to do?
Okay, listen, let me just say this. Oh, sorry.
Exactly. That's why you do zombies.
No, 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 no. LeChuck, real life ain't like it is in the movies, right?
Exactly, in the movies they do stupid shit, and they let zombies get close and they get bit.
No, this, he ain't gonna eat your brains or nothing like that.
He's saying he's a zombie?
Yes, he's-
So is he more of a ghoul?
Oh, I don't know that...
Oh, that's even worse.
He's, he's undead, he's undead, right?
Alright.
More like a vampire, right? But he, not a, no, eh...
You know, it's one of two things.
Like the guy's eh, best friend in American Werewolf in London, where he's just kinda there.
Yeah, yes. It's him, but he's dead, right? I think I know what you mean.
Yeah, cause, cause he, he does die, but then he's just kinda hanging about.
Yeah, yes. Yes, I think it's kinda like that, but he looks terrible.
It's one of two things. It's one of two things.
Right.
Either zombies aren't real, which is, you know, that's most likely the case. Let's be set.
Uh, wow, I'm, I'm-
And in that case, there isn't a zombie and it's fine.
Right.
Let's see, if there is a zombie, I'm gonna shoot the zombie, cause it's a zombie, that's what you do.
No, no, don't shoot, well, he's just gonna keep coming at you. You, all you gonna do is piss him off. Oh, no.
Yeah, and if you've seen Zombie Land, the rules are to double tap, very, very sorry, yeah, yeah.
No, don't do that, this is my twin brother, LeChuck. This is my twin brother, please.
Look, I, I know this is very difficult, but- No, you've lost him once.
Twice, twice. Well, cause he came back and then he left again.
Right, okay, twice.
I can't lose him a third time.
No, you've, you can't lose him a third time.
Thank you, please don't shoot him, right? Please.
No, wait. I'm not gonna shoot him, because he's been eaten by a fox.
No, no, right? I mean, maybe he has, but... That, that, I mean, he rose, he came and talked to us, he had locked aside me, and then he left, right? What happened after them, I don't know. I don't know, maybe he, maybe shoot. Maybe he did get uh... Eaten, I don't know, cause it stinks, right?
Pretty sure this is illegal.
I didn't organise this, this, none of this is mine.
Yeah, no, and-
No, talk about burying someone in a public park.
Yeah, this, no, this ain't my idea, this ain't my doing, I didn't do none of this.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm just saying, as far as I'm aware, Drake's not actually like a, a funeral director, I believe he's trained as a mortician, but they're, they're very different things.
I was under the understanding that he was uh... A funeral director. He directed Nathaniel's funeral?
I, I think, like, you can get somebody who isn't a funeral director to do that, but usually you have to call eh, yeah, a director to at least deal the details such as where you can, you know, bury the deceased and stuff like that.
You have an entire graveyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you say-
Why'd you bury him there?
Well, Drake made a pretty good case, right? Well, he should go up here.
Why was that?
And, and uh... You know, it's a little full at the moment, the cemetery, we need to make a bit more space. I was gonna put him on Tammer's Island with Tammy. But uh, apparently I'll get motored if I do that.
Excuse me?
Oh, I would have got motored if I done that. Apparently.
What did I tell you that?
Well, I don't, you know... Drew, Drew told me that uh, some people had uh... You know, I was gonna piss off a lot of people. I mean, he didn't give a shit, he was just saying what he heard. That people like, you know, I'mma kill that man if he thinks of fucking putting somebody else on Tammer's Island. And guess what? There's already somebody else on Tammer's Island. It's a big island, right? Oh shoot, that's my, I gotta answer, excuse me. Oh shoot, yes, hello, ma'am.
Hi Daniel, you free now, or if not, I'll catch you another time, okay?
Oh, shoot. Alright.
You're in the middle of something still.
Eh, well, yeah, well, we're finishing up, right? But uh, shoot, I don't wanna make you wait, right?
This is no problem, I'll be around again soon, so I'll um, I'll drop you a message or give you a call or something next time.
Please do, right? Please do, I would love to sit down with a, your face to face.
Okay, you did not manage to cover everything off at the meeting, no?
Well, no, it's more of a uh... Well, eh, eh, listen, let's just talk when you go time, right?
Okay, alright, please eh-
Just a little bit, right? Just a little bit.
Okay, just behave yourself, Daniel, okay?
Oh, always, right? Look who you're talking to.
Take care of yourself, I'll speak soon.
You as well, bye bye. Alright, sorry about that.
Nah, that's no prob, that's no problem at all.
It's alright.
Alright, well... What the fuck? Ah, what's going on? Alright, shall we go do the uh, blood test?
Yeah, we'll go do the test, eh, I think you've probably got heaps of stuff to do, right Chuck?
Yes, I do need to go, actually.
Nah, worries.
Alright, you, you uh-
Good luck with the test.
Ah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. LeChuck, thank you, officer. Chive. Alright, I'm gonna grab my-
No worries, I'll have a look into this for you as well and see eh, if Drake knows anything, eh... Hopefully, hopefully he can come back with all, with all positive stuff for you.
Yes, of course.
And I'll let you know if anybody comes to me with any information about seeing him around.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Alrights. Shall I meet up at the hospital, or, or uh...
Yeah, yeah, you can do, my car's just there, so.
Alright, alright, I'll see you in about two minutes, right?
No problem, see you up there.
Alrighty. Alright, let's um... Hurry up, I gotta... Shit, I actually... Alright, yeah, we should be right. I gotta duck away for like ten min, ten fifteen minutes, so I might um... Go see the blood test, and then I've gotta go do something. And um... I might be back after that. I might not, but I might be. Uh, come on. Fuck, it's getting um, getting a bit warm here. I feel like I forgot to mention something at the city council meeting. Over the last month or two, I have had little ideas here and there that I was gonna bring. Alrighty.
Sorry, I'm getting a phone call.
Yeah, you're wrong, you're wrong.
Hello? Oh, hey Scotty, how are you doing? Eh, yeah, it's-
It's not gonna, we don't, we know it's not gonna be blood.
Eh, eh, I'm-
Alright.
Sorry, I didn't tell you? Question, question mark? Oh, right, okay eh, are you okay? Do you need medical help?
I'll be out soon, hang on.
Uh, okay, eh, if you pop to the hospital, I can check it out for you. No problem, right, see you soon. Bye. Sorry.
No, you're wrong, you're wrong.
Somebody's been bitten by a rat, eh, I don't think it can be that bad, but you never know.
Oh, shoot, right? Well, they carry disease, right?
Yeah, we'll get them a, get them a wee booster shot, and they should be banned, right?
Oh, yes, right.
We decant this into one of these.
Oh yes, look at this, like a laboratory. Like a science layer, bruh.
Yeah, so this is where we run all of the, the blood tests and stuff, funnily enough, so we should be able to get a pretty accurate read on this.
Oh yes, right.
Right, lay that out nice and flat.
Oh, that's the test, eh, huh?
Right, there we go. Right, so what we'll do is we put uh, we could put a few drops eh, in- eh, in the center of the test and then we'll see which way it climbs up the E chart.
Oh, right, okay. Careful not to get any on your safe, right?
Oh, yeah, don't, don't worry. We've done this a fair few times.
Oh, yes, of course, I bet.
There you go.
Okay, let's hope that's enough.
Oh, it's starting, starting to bleed a wee bit there.
It's making the test bloat?
Oh, that's just, eh, it's the, just the movement of it. It like bleeds out from where the droplets are initially put, like it spreads.
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah, spreads along the test. Oh. Right, so that's, that's kind of what we're, we, where we'd expect it to be for water would die.
Oh, it's looking like it's just water?
Yeah, it's, it's looking just over the pH too, so it's looking like it's just water, but I can, eh,
Oh, shoot.
Give it, give it, I can give a couple of regular tests, maybe from a few different spots and, eh, just make sure.
Well, yeah, if you wanna make sure, I, you know, shoot, cuz I mean, I must, I'm glad I'm wrong, right? I didn't want it to be blood. I'm happy it ain't. Shoot.
The thing is that, that there could always be, eh, and it's not, it's not the nicest thing to say, but there could always be some like blood in fecal matter and stuff, you know, just from, just from city animals or people jumping in and cutting themselves, so, I mean.
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, shoot.
But it looks like the bulk of it is just, just dyed water, which is a good thing. It's definitely a good bonus, so.
Definitely, right? Shoot, well, I mean, that's one less thing I gotta worry about.
Man, it's definitely better to be safe than sorry, you know?
Oh, of course, yes. I mean, why do that? I mean, it's, it looks like blood. I don't know why they would have done that.
It's a really deep color as well. I think it must have been, you know, that, that kind of, that kind of gel dye that they use for cakes and stuff.
Oh, yes. Well, I mean.
Just for it to look that vibrant.
Yes, they, but they must have meant for it to look like blood too.
Yeah, and it must have been getting really in the spirit.
Oh, right, yes, of course. People wanna have their fun. I don't think it's.
Nah, you, you, you know what they're like.
Yes. All right, well, shoot, thank you so much for, for getting to the bottom of it, right? I mean, shoot, I'm relieved.
No problem at all. If you, if you need anything else, you can always just pop in and see us.
All right, thank you very much.
No worries at all.
All right, you take care, okay?
You too. Catch you later.
All right, bye bye. All right, I'm just gonna leave my car here. All right, I gotta go. Um. All right, I may, I may be back in like, I don't know, ten, twenty minutes. Um. All right. Let's go. Over to Jaffa. Oh, shit. Hello, Jaffa, thank you very much for the raid. I was literally just about to radio. I've gotta, I've gotta run like immediately. I, I've gotta run like five minutes ago. Um. Oh, Rob's on. Let's, I'll send his all over to Rob. Sorry, I, I'm in a rush. I need to go. I'll look and shout it out the right person. Uh, oh, hey, Jebby. All right, I might be back in like ten to twenty minutes. I just gotta run off and do something. Um. But yeah, sorry, we'll, uh, that was fun. I agree. That was hilarious. Um. All right, sorry, I've gotta go. Uh, all right, toodle, toodleoo, everyone. Bye bye. You let no, uh, let Rob know I gotta run, please. When we get over there. All right, bye bye. Ciao.